It's seven o'clock. We're gonna get started here in a couple of seconds. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to start with roll call.
Councilmember Parsons is absent. Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl.
Here.
Councilmember Duschler.
Here.
Councilmember Kolb.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have an agenda in front of us.
I would have approval of the agenda.
All right. You don't have to walk over me just because you want the meeting to get done fast. It's just, it's just, come on. I have a fairly short agenda tonight, so I think people are feeling like they're gonna have an evening tonight, so excuse us while we kinda look a little giddy. We have a motion to...
I'll second.
Second from Nancy. All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. To start out, we have an appearance for the Randy Award.
Ooh!
So this evening, we have Dave here to present that award. He's from the Minnesota section of the American Waterworks Association, and he's here to recognize him, so welcome, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers, thank you for inviting us here to recognize one of your own. My name is David Brown. I am the past chair of the Minnesota section of the American Waterworks Association. With me here today are Bert Tracy, Carol Boma Johnson, who are the awards committee chairs, and Eric Volk, who is the current chair of the Minnesota AWWA. We are here tonight to recognize and honor Randy Klepper for his service to the City of Crystal and the water industry. Randy was nominated for the American Waterworks Association Operators Meritorious Service Award category. Randy was selected from a number of nominees due to his continuous compliance with all public health standards in treated drinking water, consistent and outstanding contribution to water system maintenance, thereby prolonging the useful life of equipment. Randy oversees the maintenance operations and planning of the city's water distribution system, including the pipes, pump stations, and reservoirs, in conjunction with the Joint Water Commission of Crystal, New Hope, and Gold Valley. The development of new and/or modified equipment or significant process modifications provide for more efficient and effective treatment. Randy has played a major role in the construction of two emergency backup wells. He's been involved in special efforts in the training of water system operators, special acts not directly related to water treatment but which demonstrate dedication to the public beyond the normal operating responsibilities. Randy has had significant involvement with the response and recovery from two Joint Water Commission watermen breaks on the 36-inch transmission line as well as storm and flooding events. He has provided input for the design operation of multiple underground stormwater infiltration basins used to recharge the groundwater aquifer. In addition, Randy has developed good working relationships with other utilities, city departments, customers, contractors, and staff. In addition to normal work hours, I know Randy has worked nights and weekends to maintain water service for the community. Water service professionals are often first responders and are essential personnel to ensure public health, safety, economic, and the quality of life we enjoy here in Minnesota. What we do with our water resources today affects not only us but future generations. At this point, I would like to welcome Randy up. The Minnesota section recognizes and values Randy's exemplary service. The Minnesota section of the American Waterworks Association would like to thank the City of Crystal and the city council for their support and encouragement for Randy, Mark, and other employees to be involved in their community, water industry, and AWWA. The Minnesota section of AWWA is honored to recognize Randy Klepper with the Minnesota section Operators Meritorious Service Award. Congratulations. Randy was very deserving of this, and I've known Randy for quite a few years, and I was really happy that he was selected here, so congratulations again.
Speech.
Speech? You'd like to say a few words?
Speech.
Yeah, just put that mic right up to your...
Yeah. I'd just like to thank the City of Crystal for being as supportive of the utility departments as they've been and the council being supportive of our work that we do down there. And I'd also like to thank my staff, because without them, I can't do what I do, and we do have a very good staff. And Mark, for supporting everything we do in public works. But thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, I'd like to comment probably best about being the first responder. When you have a water main break, it's, and we've had a couple, as you mentioned, there's nobody else who's gonna respond. I mean, a lot of times when police and fire come, there's something that individuals can do, but with this particular job, it's not like citizens are gonna step in and be that first responder. So I remember on, I think it was the second break, when we were very close to being out of water, how panicky I got, and it was really nice to see, it was really nice to see that we had staff in here when I got to the city and things were being handled. So, yeah, we do appreciate you and we understand the role you play, so thank you. All right.
I just have one thing, too. When I was working for the, selling uniforms for many years, I provided a lot of them to the water department at the City of Minneapolis, and I think I've told you this, Randy, but some of the guys, they knew I was on the council, and they had said to me, "You guys in Crystal, you have the best water utility guy that there is, Randy." So I always thought that was a nice compliment, and so congratulations again.
All right. No, you're not required to stay here for the rest of...
Yes.
So, we will move on with our agenda. All right, so next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda, and I'm gonna read that into the record at this time. Approval of minutes from the following meetings: the city council meeting from November 8, 2018, a work session from that same date, and then the council special meeting from November 15, and the work session from that same date. Then approval of a list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. And 4-3, I'd like to pull off and put that on the regular agenda, first item for the regular agenda, and it is the approval of a resolution authorizing an application to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the Becker Park Stormwater Project. So with those, is it two items? Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as read.
All right. Thank you, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have open forum. Open forum. The city council appreciates hearing from citizens from the community about their concerns or what's going on in their lives, and we'd like to set time aside each meeting for open forum. And to provide ample time for speaking, we'd like to limit the time to roughly three minutes per speaker, 10 minutes per topic. By rule, no action can be taken on any items brought before the council during this forum, and the council may place items discussed during open forum on subsequent council meetings. So, do we have any yellow slips in front of you? Okay. I happen to know we do have somebody here who's wishing to speak during open forum. He can fill out the yellow sheet after he speaks. Could you step forward, please? Introduce yourself, if you don't mind.
Yes. My name's Danny Hernandez, and I am the associate youth pastor at Serenity Village Community Church.
And you're welcome to just go ahead and speak.
Well, first, let me take a moment to thank the city council for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the opportunity. And on behalf of Serenity Village Community Church, we just wanted to extend an invitation to the City of Crystal, those that are watching online, as well as each individual city council member, to our anniversary service coming December 2nd, Sunday, December 2nd, at 6:00 PM. It's just a night and an opportunity for those in the church community, as well as its partners and supporters, to be able to celebrate all the things and the impact that the church has had on the community with everything that has gone on in 2018. So again, we just wanna individually invite each and every one of you, and we hope to see you there on December 2nd at 6:00 PM. And we do have cards as well that we could also leave here, so.
Okay. Before you leave, there's a table right over here. Go ahead and drop them there, and people can help themselves. Any questions for Pastor Danny? Is it okay if I call you Pastor Danny?
Yeah.
That's what people from the church call him.
How many years has Serenity been here?
We'll be celebrating our sixth year anniversary.
Six, oh, overall.
Yes.
I thought it was just a few, but I'm, that six is fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, it's been three years since they've owned it, is that correct?
Three years, yeah. December of 2015 is when we purchased and now own the building that we're currently meeting at, yes.
So, yeah, all right. We have a, we have a continued item that we're watching in that area, because there tends to be a lot of people parking on the streets, so we continue to have some conversations about how that's working throughout the neighborhood. So we are reminded of Serenity Village. It's a great problem to have.
Yeah.
For a church growing like it is, so thank you for coming in and letting us know. Feel free to use this forum for, you know, any big announcements that you have for the community. It's a good way to reach out, and other organizations and businesses can do the same, so it's a great use of this time.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing nobody else approach, we'll close open forum. Let's move on to the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is now what was 4-3 of the consent agenda. Just kinda wanted to talk about this particular item. It's actually for a loan that's zero interest, and just kinda wanted to talk about it. I didn't think it belonged on the consent agenda, because it does commit funds for the next 10 years. It's a 10-year loan, and it does actually do, it takes the financials for the next 10 years and dedicates it for that, and to do that without having a conversation about it, I didn't think was appropriate. When, when, when we commit to be a debt-free city, there's basically three pillars. One is not to acquire any more debt, and this ended up on the consent agenda, and it felt like, almost like, it almost felt like a violation of that pillar. Item two, and I guess would be the pillar of becoming a debt-free, would be long-term planning and funding that plan. And then item, the pillar number three is to try to pay off debt early. So, just kinda wanted to have a conversation. There's, there's some, I guess my concern is if, if we go ahead and change the way we're going to be financing this project, we are actually committing about $125,000 a year of future discretionary income, and it just changes things. To me, it seemed appropriate to have that conversation.
Quick thing, Mayor, if I may, just to be clear, the item you're approving is the application, so if we get it...
Okay.
Then we have to come back to the council to approve the actual loan.
Okay.
So the item before you, that's why it's on consent, is just, we're applying for it.
That changes it.
And so if we get it, then it comes back for kind of the official, yep, we wanna move forward this way.
Okay.
And the intent was to play off that. This is for the storm, Becker Park Stormwater Infiltration Project.
Stormwater Infiltration, yep.
And we've already committed the funds, but we thought if we could get the loan, zero interest, it would help us manage our cash flow better, but I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I mean...
You know, since that fund is kind of tight as it is, we thought it would give us more time to spread out.
Right. You know, and there's two ways to look at that. It gives us flexibility in the near term, but when we go to a long-term plan, we're looking for the flexibility in the long term, and it's kind of a trade-off. And I guess, as we go through, if, if, if the council approves the application, as we go through this, we have to decide, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna stay truer to what, what we had set out as far as debt, and do we need the flexibility now, or do we want it later? And does that discretion belong with this council, or does it belong with the council in the future, in the future 10 years or what have you? So...
So the schedule is, if we apply, we should hear back in, I believe it was 45 days, so it would be the next council that would make the official decision whether to accept or move forward or not.
Sure. All right. Any other questions, comments? John?
I take it there's other cities that apply for similar grants? Do you have any idea of the number of cities that...
I'm actually optimistic, 'cause last I ran their website, they have $11 million available for this program, so I'm optimistic that, and it's a good, obviously, I'm biased, it's a good project, too, so I'm reasonably confident that this is gonna be a good problem for us to have.
Great. Thank you.
A good problem for us to have. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. John?
I'll make a motion for approval authorizing an application to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the Becker Park Stormwater Project.
All right. Thank you, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jeff. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Now, number one on the regular agenda, which is number two on the regular agenda, since we moved that one, is to consider dispersments of $25,000 or greater. We have a couple of those. I will read them into the record at this time. First item is AEM Financial Solutions. That's for finance, financial services for $25,350. And the second item is Met Council for wastewater fees of $127,413. And the final item is West Metro Fire for fire protection services of $95,305. And total dispersment of $25,000 or greater is $248,69.05. Looking for questions on any of these?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And on this AEM Financial Solutions, I mean, $25,000, what's that for, kinda?
We pay about, it's not quite $12,000 a month, I believe, for the, just the ongoing financial services. We are paying $6,000 of the $12,000 towards the utility rate study, and let's see, $4,000 of the $8,000 for the long-term plan, and then we have another $3,000, I hope someone's adding this up as I go, 'cause I'm not, another $3,000 for some temporary help while, without an account payable.
Okay.
That's what it's for.
So some of it's the study that we did for you.
Correct, correct. There are two steps.
I just thought, boy, if that's what we're paying them for.
Right, no.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
No, we've taken a lot of extra steps to kinda change how we're doing.
No, I know, but then all of a sudden, I saw that, so I just, that's not a question.
That's great.
That's good.
That's good. All right. Any other questions relating to these three items? Looking for a motion, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of dispersments over $25,000.
All right. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Julie. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Did I miss it? All right. Item two, the council will consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of a tandem axle dump truck. Public Works Director Mike Ray is, Mark Ray is here to talk about that purchase, so, Mark, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, we've been notified that the lead time now for trucks is anywhere from 10 months to a year. So this purchase was scheduled for 2019. We're trying to, in order to have it happen in 2019, we're coming before you tonight. They purchased off the state contract. There's kinda two parts. One is you buy the chassis, and then you buy the, all the attachments. Total purchase cost is just under $280. It was a little bit over the anticipated budget. Budget was $265, however, expecting the sale revenue of it going to auction to close that difference. With that, it's a dump truck.
Yep. Questions from the council? Go ahead, John.
So in both proposals, one has obviously the base unit, which you just said you buy separately on the very top, and then the second one, I didn't see that the base unit was included in the pricing, but it's, you know, about $30,000 more, is that right? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, so one of them's just the chassis, I'm not sure, whoa. So which one are you looking at?
Okay.
Which is the...
There's one where, for the spec, the first line is...
So is it from the NUS truck, or is it from Towmaster?
Both of them. So you had NUS truck, and the base price is $87,000 for the, right?
Yep.
And I take, that must be the same for both of them, correct?
So the proposals before you are only for this truck. So the base truck, this, the NUS truck one is for the chassis, and then basically the frame. The other one from Towmaster is for things like the lights, and the plow, and the box, and stuff like that.
So you're basically, you're combining the two of the proposals together?
Yeah, so basically what happens is NUS will ship the frame over to Towmaster to get built out, is how that works.
All right. I was kinda confused by that, that maybe there were like two proposals in front of us.
Nope. Phase one and phase two.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions on that?
I just wanna make one comment. I just feel a little bit bad.
No picture.
Because I feel a little bit like I'm robbing the incoming council members of the, like, rite of passage of approving like a million dollars' worth of purchases on our first meeting by taking this truck.
And ordering it now.
And ordering it now, so I just feel a little bit bad about that.
So is there a motion to put a million dollars' equipment on the first? Just so I'm clear, I mean, I have time.
I can't make that motion, no.
No, it's just kinda, you know, it's kinda tradition.
He'll have 20 other things the first...
And quite frankly, yeah, I don't think we're...
We won't let you down when Becker Park shows up. How about that?
That's right, that's right. It's coming.
All right. Looking for a motion on this item. John?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement dump truck and the attachments for 2019.
All right. Thank you, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Mark's gonna stick with us for most of this meeting.
We're gonna get through this and get you out of here.
All right.
All right, next up, pond dredging. We opened bids. Budget was 610. We had a crazy number of bids. Lowest was VITE, basically $2,526. The project is what we've talked about a long time. The only kinda change is we pulled out the native buffer, and in a lot of conversations with contractors on the maintenance side, they recommend we do that separately, so the contractor that installs it is the one that maintains it for, I believe, we're looking for a three-to-five-year maintenance contract as part of that project. So, little shift, but the end product is still the same. We are waiting for, never mind, that's the next item. Approve the contract. Here's the pricing. Any questions?
Julie?
I'm just stunned that the variance is here, $525 and then a $1,207. I mean, what in the world?
Yeah, and if you can, if you can imagine the, our staff had some minor heart attacks when they're ripping open the bids due to the pricing they saw when they first opened the bids, just compared to later. Yeah, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, and I know some of the companies on the higher end, I have no idea what's going on, especially in light of like our sanitary sewer contracts, we're very favorable and tight together, so I, I'm not sure.
But, as long as you're confident they can do the work that you need, you have...
Yeah, VITE has a lot of experience doing this work, so we're not concerned.
All right.
All right.
Nice.
Any other comments, questions, motion? Julie?
I'll make a motion awarding the contract for the Winnetka Pond dredging project 2018 to 04.
All right. Looking for a second. Jeff? All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
One recusal, too.
Okay. Sorry I missed that.
Thank you.
John recused himself. So no roll call on that one. Right? Chrissy? We don't need a roll call for a recusal, do we?
I look to the city attorney for that.
You don't really need a roll call anyway, but we just kind of do by...
All right. We'll just go on to the next item, then. Mark, welcome back.
Good evening again. All right, so now we'd approve the contract. A portion of the work is actually gonna happen on private property, and so we've been talking with Winnetka Village Apartments. We need a permanent easement for both the pond area, as well as where the native buffer is going in. We've a term, we've agreed to the terms. We are literally just waiting for a signature from the mortgage holder at this point. So the item before you is to approve the permanent easement agreement, and then once they sign it, we'll bring it before you, Mayor, to sign. So that's pretty straightforward.
Questions? John?
So the reason why you don't have a signature now, is there legal counsel's reviewing the agreement?
The mortgage holder's reviewing the agreement and waiting, and I'm not sure what process they go through on their end. They've been talking with our city attorney's staff, too.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion on this, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the pond easement and buffer maintenance agreement for Winnetka Pond.
Thank you, Nancy. Looking for a second. John?
I second that motion.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next item.
All right, lawn mowing services. So we contract out lawn grass violations, EDA properties, the Highway 81 corridor, some minor landscaping, for example, mulching projects as needed. A contract for use of one-year contract, however, can be extended for up to two additional years. The funding sources for this contract depend on what they're mowing, so it, we kinda keep individual budgets tabs in each budget. We solicited quotes in 2018 for lawn mowing services for 2018. Whipper Snapper was the best value we got. They were our contractor this year, did a great job. They're also actually a Crystal business, and so we're looking to keep that contract going.
Very good. Any questions on this item? John?
So I see for your maps here that they primarily take care of the property along County Road 81, is that right?
Correct.
And so do we receive anything in residual back from the county for taking care of their...
Their undying love and gratitude. That's about it. No, we do not. My understanding is that was the terms of the agreement for the 81 corridor construction.
Correct. Thank you.
Otherwise, no, it's a hard no. Nancy?
This is just a question, the white-stripped areas on the maps, are those areas that you're mowing? Or sections that you're mowing?
There's definitely something funky with the way that printed.
Just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that printed that way. No, there's nothing, those white blocks are a tack of the copier.
Okay.
Or the white blocks, got it.
Yeah.
It's great to give business to a local following up.
Say that again. Nancy?
Oh, just, just saying, it's, it's great to do business with a Crystal business.
And just, full disclosure, I mean, they submitted a competitive bid, along with the other ones we solicited from, so it just so happens they're local. other ones we solicited from, so it just so happens they're local.
Very good.
Very good, all right. John, go ahead.
I was just kind of curious what the process is for checking their work. I mean, do we actually send someone down County Road 81, make sure that there's no grass clippings in the street, you know, can you give me a little...
Yeah, so 81 is the easiest one to check because we're driving by there all the time. But yeah, so Brad Ford and the park superintendent, especially for, I mean, some of the special projects, too, he'll be involved in. Otherwise, you know, we know where the EDA lots are, so as I'm out toodling around, I'll swing by and check them out. For the violation lots, they're required to take before and after pictures that are reviewed by the Public Works Administrative Assistant, and they literally include them with like a ruler in the grass showing where it's at, so there's that check on that part of it as well.
Thank you.
I guess to further answer the question, Julie Deschler is also up in the north side, so she's able to handle a lot of...
I watch.
She watches, you're darn right.
That and litter.
Does she have lawn grass? What? No, is that...
She will let us know if 81...
She will let us know, absolutely.
Oh, I do, that's...
All right, looking for a motion on this item. John?
I make a motion awarding the contract for lawn mowing services.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? Julie?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Mark sat down, which means we're on to our last, last item. The council will consider a contract for 2019 with the city of Brooklyn Park for environmental health services, and Ann Norris is going to talk to us about that. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you, the pressure's on, this is the last item. This is the annual agreement with Brooklyn Park to deal with environmental health issues such as garbage houses, mold in properties, things like that. We have a contract, we've had a contract with Brooklyn Park for many years. The cap is about, I believe, $2,000, and we have not come near hitting that in the last couple of years, but they are a great, great resource to have when we need them, so we definitely want to keep that relationship and that agreement.
All right. Question?
We're having $357 so far this year.
Woo-hoo, well, that's okay.
Oh, that's good.
That's really good.
Money right back in the bank.
Yep.
Re-bank checks.
Exactly.
All right, any questions relating to that? Looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2019 contract with the city of Brooklyn Park for environmental health services.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Nancy. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, that is the end of our agenda. We do have a couple announcements. Crystal Business Association is meeting Wednesday, November 21 at 8:30 AM, and Christina's Childcare, that's 5510 West Broadway. City official, city offices will be closed Thursday, November 22, and Friday, November 23 for Thanksgiving holiday.